Good evening, welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session for Monday, October 7th, 2019. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll be starting with a moment of silence for Editha Lindgutla, who is one of our students who passed away recently. Please join me. At this time, I'd like to add, ask the Board to adopt the agenda as presented. So Mr. Harrison made the motion, Mr. Walter made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's six to zero. And we'll start with our first report from the Transportation Department Spotlight, Mr. Brian Schultz and Mr. Art Whitaker.
Well, good evening everyone, Madam Chair, members of Board, Dr. Lauter. Really pleased to kind of kick this Spotlight, Department Spotlight ritual off. Been working with Art for all of...
Three months?
Three months now. I feel like we're long-lost brothers. And, no, it's been really great. And I think in the spirit of the work session, I think it's great that we kind of sit down at the table and really hear the amazing work that Art does. I know at the last Board meeting, I was able to give you some of the highlights and how many students Art transports on a daily basis and the size of cities. And he's going to go a little more in-depth, talk about his budget and talk about his long-term goals with you. But just want to back up a little bit first and just give you an idea of the organizational chart. I know it's one of the things, right about the time that I came onboard, some of the organization shifted. And just as a reminder, so you'll see that I am the point person for auxiliary services and then work with some really great colleagues and you'll see them below with Kids Plus, Operations Risk Management, School Nutrition, Technology, and of course, Transportation and Art leads that. And so what we'd like to do during this Department Spotlight time is just to really provide you with an overview of the great work that Transportation Department does. They're accomplishing it every day in the small and the large, and then also what Art's plans are for the future. So I'll turn the rest of the presentation over to Art Whitaker.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of Board. Thank you so much for having this opportunity to be able to showcase Transportation a little bit. Our mission, it's every day, to provide that safe, reliable, on-time transportation to approximately 24,000 students from Cabarrus County, and we also support about 3,800 students from the Kannapolis City School District. As you can see, as we go through these slides, there are multiple areas that we promote or we give operational support to. Vehicles, fueling, vehicle maintenance, safety and training, budget, innovations coming to Cabarrus County, our accomplishments and our goals and long-range plannings. The asterisk denotes the fact that we do support the operations in Kannapolis via those asterisks in those departments. Fully staffed, let's first go into our vehicles. Fully staffed, we have about 302 drivers. We have eight planners which help guide those 302 drivers. If you look at our total yellow bus fleet, it's 346. That denotes also having KCS in there. Spare buses as well, 44 spare buses, that denotes KCS. Activity buses and our mini-buses. We have eight right now, we have four on orders. So I can't say enough about the flexibility that the mini-buses give us. They give us that flexibility to be able to haul our smaller teams, our coach, I mean, our golf teams, our cheerleaders, anything that does not require to fill up a big activity bus, we can basically put them on a mini-bus. So it gives us a lot of flexibility. There's our minivans for our McKinney-Vento students, we have 20 of those. So if you look at everything that we basically have, we have about 481 pieces of equipment that we can put students on. Fueling operations, we support the fueling operations with KCS. We have three fuel truck drivers, that's what they do on a full-time basis. They fuel all the buses for Kannapolis and for Cabarrus. We drove approximately almost 4.5 million miles last year, 4,428,179 miles. We burn approximately 5,000 gallons worth of diesel fuel daily and we are fastly approaching the million gallon club when it comes time to, if you look at what we're able to pump in diesel and gasoline. If you look at our fuel storage capacity, we are able to, once we're topped out and we have all of our tanks completely full, we're able to almost hold 50,000 gallons in total gasoline and diesel. And if our fuel trucks are completely full as well, we have 5,400 gallons there. So as you can see, we sit on a large reserve of diesel and gasoline, just in case we have an emergency or the county has an emergency, they would be coming to our facility to gain access to that fuel.
Keep it full?
Yes, sir. Our vehicle maintenance, if you look at our vehicle maintenance, there's 26 individuals that are responsible for making sure those 481 pieces of equipment are running each and every day. That's everybody from our mechanics to our stockroom, to our supervisors, to our fuelers. We have 20 maintenance bays that we perform that maintenance in. I can tell you a little bit about the facility at 111 Union Cemetery Road. It's the nicest facility on the eastern seaboard in my opinion, but we have actually outgrown it. We have now gone and taken the old shop and we have resurrected it and we are now starting to put school bus maintenance down at our old shop. It's 15 bays at the new shop and we've taken over the five bays in the old shop, so that's where we get the 20 bays total from. If you look at, and trying to maintain that, I'm sorry.
How many lifts do you have in your bays? Do you have all your bays armed with lifts?
We have one in-ground lift and then I think we have at least 10 or 12 portable lifts. We prefer the portable lifts. The portable lifts, we can pull those out of the way and we can push those in when we need to. So I think we're only about three or four short in having a lift in every bay. So we kind of share that.
Would that help your need for flexibility?
Yes, sir. Most definitely. Yep.
So you're going to have those in the Capitol budget?
On my Capitol budget, yes, sir.
Do you do any extra, or I'll let you talk.
Okay. I was just trying to point out the fact that in keeping that fleet running, it looks like it's about $1.6 million in parts. If you try to quantify that or if you kind of give you some gee-whiz information there, it's 2,412 gallons of antifreeze, 15,000 gallons of quarts of oil, and 808 tires. So that just gives you some kind of scope about when you get ready to do that vehicle maintenance, what you're going to have to do.
Is it a state's water or do you contract it?
We go around and we have state contracts. We can either buy it on state contract or we can buy it off a state contract independently if it meets state contract pricing. Yeah, it does come out of the state budget. Thank you.
So on your tires, do you, knowing when I first got on here, tire balancing, we had just gotten our first tire balancing machine back in 2012, 13-ish?
Yes, sir.
How many do you have? You still just have the one?
We still have the one, yes, sir. We have a dedicated tire mechanic. It's all he does is tires. He has a truck that's set up as a mobile platform and he can basically do all of his work at the shop, load his tires and his tools in his truck, and if he has to, he can go out in the field and change tires if he has to.
And do you have an alignment?
We have the alignment machine at the shop, at the garage, in the tire bay itself. So, yes, sir.
Is the data you're presenting here based on 180-some days of school activity or full 365?
I think it's 365. I'm funded for 365.
Usage all year long?
Yeah. Thank you. Our safety and training, if you look at our inclement weather, we have a process. We launch our early warning weather team early in the morning when we believe we have a threat of inclement weather moving in on us. We have a 3:00 AM team that goes out and they basically ride the roads and they report back on what the road conditions are. If you look at our annual recurrent training, we get all the school bus drivers together every year, usually at J. Robinson, and we basically go over the new procedures that they'll be facing each and every year. DMV has the ability to come in there and talk to them as well about what changes they see in the state in regards to their driver's license. And that's where we go over a lot of new policies and a new procedure. So we actually have a captive audience with them.
Do we have any agreements with South Carolina counties?
Excuse me?
Do we have any agreements with South Carolina counties?
No.
No.
No, sir. Our emergency management assistance, if we're called on by emergency management to provide assistance, if we have to evacuate a school, we will be bringing a tremendous amount of assets with us and we will be able to handle the need that if, God forbid, that that arises. And our activity buses, we have that reciprocal agreement with all 100 counties within the state. I can pick up the cell phone and I can call my colleague in any of the 100 counties and they can render assistance to us anywhere in the state. Good story I like to tell is that we got a call from a principal and he was in Kitty Hawk, North Carolina, in Dare County, as far east as you could possibly get away from us, and the individual told me that he was getting ready to drive at night and he had no headlights. And so here you are at the Kitty Hawk Memorial, getting ready to get dark. I was able to pick up the phone, call my colleague in Dare County, and they were back on the road within an hour. So it really does give us a good sense when we do travel outside of the county that we have that ability to render assistance, but we do not have those agreements with South Carolina.
I just want to share a quick story that some years ago, I was on Highway 29 where 73 West runs into 29, and a bus from another district was stranded just off the intersection. I stopped and they said, "Oh, I've already called my, you know, head of transportation, they've already called your department," and lo and behold, we had one of our repair trucks arriving.
Yep.
So that was a proud moment for the district.
It is. It's very nice to know that we can supply, they supply that need for us and we can supply that need for them as well. Yes, ma'am?
So just a quick question. I know that just I've heard out in the community, sometimes when we have to close the schools because of the temperatures, that it's because the buses are diesel and they can't start well in the cold weather. Is that accurate?
Well, what it does, it becomes problematic. It's not that it won't start, but things don't function correctly when the temperature gets as low as it needs to get. They have a harder time starting. Some of the doors, they're air-driven. If there's any moisture in that air system, it becomes frozen until the temperature in the bus rises. So it just, it won't, that it will not start, it has a hard time starting or things just don't work as planned when things get that cold.
Is there like a certain degree that you kind of...
Yeah, I think it's 15. We start looking at the fact that around 15 degrees, that whether or not we want to make the decision on what we want to try to do about our operation.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me just speak to that because like Art said, when you get to 15 is when you start having some of these mechanical problems. And a lot of times, it's not that it won't start, but what we know is that 20, 25 buses or whatever may not start, they may have a problem, and then that delay, we usually call that delay, means now we have two hours to be able to get the sub-buses to those locations. So it's not most of the time that the bus won't run, but those two hours mean now when they go and try to start the bus, we can get it fixed before that time. So it just tends to make, instead of a kid standing out on the side of the road at 15 degrees and they don't know they were coming, the delay means, okay, now we can get all the buses out there and going, if that makes sense.
Yep. And lastly, any out-of-state travel, we ask that the charter bus be used for that out-of-state travel. And we have a preferred list or a preferred vendor list that has been vetted by certain individuals that we contract with. And then as a cursory look, we send the mechanic out there, right before the charter bus is getting ready to leave, to make sure what actually we contracted with is what shows up. And then the mechanic does a walk-around on that bus as well. So it's vetted twice before the students get on it. Under safety and training, anyone that drives a newer vehicle might have that collision avoidance system on it. Now, I know that a lot of people like it and a lot of people might turn it off, but newer vehicles are equipped with collision avoidance. So if that's the steering wheel shaking, or the seat rumbling, or lights flashing. DPI came to us probably back in January and wanted to do a pilot program where they wanted to equip three school buses with collision avoidance. And they wanted to know if we wanted to pilot it. And we said, "Yeah, we would be more than glad." So they went in, they installed some collision avoidance systems onboard of our school buses, and those collision avoidance systems gave feedback to the driver. It was just that round dot that you see right there up in the dashboard. And then whenever anything, whenever the Mobile Eye Project or the Mobile Eye Sensor saw lane departure or saw a headway monitoring, forward collision warning or pedestrian warning, it gave feedback to the driver. So we captured all that feedback, we sent it over to DPI, and the results are being studied today. So that's just part of what we try to do to maintain the safety and the training of our, we want to give that feedback to our driver. So they'll take that information, they'll go back to the Spec Committee with the state and they'll determine whether or not it's beneficial for everyone to have a collision avoidance onboard school buses going forward. Talking about our budget, the state, our overall budget is approximately $15 million from the state funded. We kick in another $1.5 million locally. As you can see, the top three biggest expenditures on our budget is actually personnel at 10.7 million with benefits. I say that with benefits because of the fact that the majority of the people that work for us are full-time bus drivers. Our fuel costs are roughly $2 million. Now, I will caution you that we go out on the market and we have to buy fuel. Fuel is an economy for us. We have to go out and we have to purchase, just like everybody else. So we're very, we see some rises and fall in our fuel prices. So that number sometimes can fluctuate. And our maintenance cost is, like I said in the previous slide, about 1.6 million.
I believe about a month ago, Personnel mentioned to us that you are fully staffed and your bus drivers are at the time, you're very close.
At, we're very close.
Which is no easy accomplishment.
Right. When we started school, we were fully staffed. Yep. Thanks for that. In looking at things that could influence our budget, our efficiency, of course, if everybody understands that we run the triple tier, a lot of counties don't run it, but a lot of other counties do run it. That means we run the bus on the first tier, the high school, we run it on the elementary run, and then we run it on the middle school run. So as many times as we can run that bus, and we try to make sure that that bus is utilized to the nth degree. And then in the afternoon, we run that bus three and four times as much as we possibly can. Everything we do is dedicated by ridership. We want to make sure that we have high ridership, just as you would on ADM, you want to make sure that you have high ADM, we want to make sure that we have high ridership. So high ridership coupled with making sure that our routes fit our structure and using them multiple times increases our efficiency. If you look at those variable expenses, once again, I talked about our fuel. We're going out on the open market, we get bids from our fuel vendor every single solitary day. We ask three or four vendors to send us quotes on, if we ordered fuel today, what would you charge us? So we have to go on the open market and buy that fuel and parts. If anybody went to buy part for their car, it could be from here to here. It just depends on what you're asking for and what the availability is.
Yes, sir. With the buses on such a constant kind of schedule, are the mechanics working later hours?
We have a...
Logistically, I know you make it work, but does that have the mechanics working late at night sometimes?
So what we do is, on our fueling operations, we bring a mechanic in at 4:00 AM. So that mechanic can, those mechanics can, we have a staggered start. First guy's off the lot, it's 4:00 AM. So he's fueling buses before they even roll. So we have that, we already have that going. We have early 5:00 AM mechanics that come in, they work till 2:00. And then we go ahead and we bring in a nine-to-six shift. So we have to, we're on the road almost, you know, 12, 13 hours a day, so we have to have coverage for that. So we try to stagger those start times in order to make sure that we have coverage. Our last mechanic is, usually leaves around 6:00, 6:30 in the afternoon.
So for sports activities, you have somebody on call?
Yep. On all of our activity buses up on the bulkhead, we have emergency contact telephone numbers. So if anything happens, they can call that phone number and it goes directly to the general manager or it goes to one of our shift supervisors. He will go ahead and start calling and rendering assistance for those. Plus, if we go out of the county, we have the other part too. Our annual growth needs, we need to grow and we're growing each and every day with the district. We need school buses, we need activity buses, we need personnel, we need facilities. Our mini-buses, I touched on that. You know, we like those mini-buses, they give us that flexibility in order that we can go ahead and put that smaller team or that smaller group or that smaller club on that bus and save up a free big bus for the football team or big traveling teams. And then we have our unfunded programming. Those are mandated by law. We must provide transportation to some of those unfunded programming needs. As Cabarrus County Schools' mission statement is that we want to make sure that we meet the needs, the educational needs of those children, and we will provide that transportation. But it does come at a cost. Some of that transportation is either not funded or completely underfunded. So those are some of the things that can influence our budget.
So does a summer food program, is the transportation for that program out of your office or out of nutrition?
That's a joint venture, and I have a slide on that. That's a joint venture where we go ahead and team up and we give the school nutrition people an activity bus, and they can go ahead and run their program out of the activity bus.
So the McKinney-Vento, I guess, is that one of the unfunded?
Underfunded.
Underfunded. And you have an idea, or can you give us an idea of how much effort is put into our McKinney-Vento? I know we use the minivans.
We use the minivans. And we, once again, we get a lot of information from our Student Services. Our Student Services works with us as a liaison department. They call us up and identify McKinney-Vento students, no matter where they are. We're going to Charlotte multiple times during the day. We've gone to Lexington, we go to Gastonia. We're on the road early in the morning and we're on the road in the evening delivering those McKinney-Vento students to their home outside of Cabarrus County. One of the things that I really get excited over the fact is because we want to be innovative when we come to our transportation needs. I mentioned a moment ago about our Mobile Eye Project. That is a success. We have signed an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding with DPI, and basically, we are going to be receiving an electric school bus. That electric school bus will, we will be taking a bus off the road that is less efficient. It is a swap-out program. The state of North Carolina says that they're going to try to be using their Clean Air Initiative money through the Volkswagen settlement in reducing its carbon emissions. And they will be asking us to remove a school bus off the route and be interjecting an electric school bus. That electric school bus, we look at it as a positive because of the fact that we are embracing that Clean Air Initiative within our county. We can also use it as an emergency management tool. It is the biggest battery in town. It can charge cell phones, it can charge laptops, it can charge any electronic device that you need to. So if there is an emergency somewhere and first responders or somebody needs to charge up their cellphone, we have the biggest battery in town.
How does it do that? Outlets at the seat?
Yeah, it's outlets inside, outlets underneath and inside.
This is a bus that's going to go on the same route or is it going to...
We're going to use the same bus on the same route. We're going to put it in the city and let it run in the city. And we're also going to use it as a learning tool, a CTE learning tool. We want to take it out and we want to promote it as an alternative fuel vehicle. So we will take that vehicle and we'll push it out in our schools and use it as an educational tool as well. So we're very excited about that.
So what type of special charging setups do you need now because you've got to have a charging station? And I guess this bus is going to have to have cool down to let the battery reset?
It uses the same plug, from what I'm understanding, it uses the same plug as a Tesla. So it uses that J, whatever that is, 45 plug or whatever it is. So we, in fact, they brought the bus down here and they had to charge it at a hotel to get it back to Greensboro. So they actually, anywhere that we can use a standard car charger, I think the bus will take it. We are in talks with the city of Concord in developing the fact that we need to have a charging unit at the garage. So we're in the talks about once the, once the, all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed and we actually get the primary, just before we get the bus, we want to make sure that we have our charging station in place. And we are already starting talks on that as well. And we will keep it at the garage, so that's where the charging station will be at.
We won't actually get the bus until February or March?
February, March. Yep. They have to sign, they have to, it's through the Volkswagen settlement when Volkswagen gave a portion of the settlement to the states in order to, for their Clean Air Initiative. So we will be with DPI, we will be accessing that Volkswagen settlement money.
And just while we're talking about energy efficiency, are there any longer-term plans about using natural gas as fuel for buses?
So there's two types on that. There's a natural gas, a C and G bus, and then there's a propane. That a lot of people are going away from C and G and they're actually looking at propane-powered buses. They have lawnmowers that are propane-powered now. So my only, I'm only hesitant about the propane for one reason. Propane is an unregulated industry and it can be $2 today and $5 tomorrow. So where we do have some, we do have some leverage when it comes to fuel and electricity, when you go to propane or you go into a natural gas, you have that unregulated industry that you have to deal with. So it concerns us a little bit. If you talk to all the professionals, they said that you're doing it right, you're going directly from fossil fuel over to clean energy and you're not trying to make that step in the middle to natural gas. So we're moving from fossil fuel directly into clean energy. To highlight some of the accomplishments that we were able to achieve, we got all of our principals together, we're all about feedback. We want to make sure that all of our, we're providing the best service. So we go through these feedback sessions with our principals and our bus APs and we ask them, "How are we doing? What would you do? What would you change if we had, if we had to change things?" So in January, we asked, "How satisfied are you with your customer service?" And 86% of our first session said that they were very satisfied with the customer service that transportation was able to receive, able to give them. Our second session stated they were over 70% satisfied. When we came to the fact of when you have to call and make a reservation for an activity bus, we asked, you know, "How were you treated there?" 100% said that they were treated very nicely and we answered all their questions. So we feel we're doing a very effective job in taking that feedback and going back and making sure that we're giving good customer service to our principals and our schools. Our state inspection scores, this is a little different. This is like golf. The lower, the better. Okay? So when the DPI inspector comes to our district, he's looking for deficiencies within our school bus. Things that will park the bus or things that will keep it from running. And the less deficiencies that he finds in our school buses, the better score, the lower the score we get. So we want to make sure that we continue to get low scores from the inspector. We just recently now have our long-term inspector. We have, our inspector retired and we have been getting a different inspector every year. So now we have the same inspector and we look forward to building a long-term relationship with him. To also talk about our community engagement, we provide the bus for the school nutrition, for the summer feeding program. We also want to make sure that our students have all the materials that they need. So we participate in the Walmart Stuff the Bus, the School Tools 9. We participate in Touch a Truck, which is put on by the Chamber of Commerce. That's where we bring our equipment in and we let the kids go out, touch it, get in it, make it, you know, I guess they're going to act like it's running, but of course, it's not running. But of course, to them, it's a big yellow piece of equipment and we bring usually our wreckers and our school buses for them to see. And then we're always good partners with the county. We provide transportation to the Parks and Rec, the Sheriff's Department, and the Youth Leadership Program. To wrap it up, our goals and our long-term planning, we want to continue to obtain the lowest possible scores in the state for North Carolina when it comes to school bus. I have some figures for you. In 1718, DPI scored us at 34.9. In 1718, DPI scored us at 34.9. In 1819, they scored us at 32.3, which is lower. That's what we want. And we'll be going through our annual inspection this year. We don't know when he's coming, of course. It's a surprise inspection. And the region score, so if you look at North Carolina, and we're divided into regions, we're the central region, and the region average is 38. So you can see that we are below those particular scores. So that's good. We want to improve, one thing that we're constantly challenged to, since we run our operations out of the Auxiliary Services Building, we experience response time delays because of traffic and things like that. So, you know, when we look at how do we increase our response time, if you're up at Bogart, and you have an issue with the bus, or you have a breakdown, and you call a need for service, basically, we have to dispatch out of 111 Union Cemetery. So it's going to take us a little while, especially 4:00 in the afternoon, to get on the other side of Bogart up there. So we're constantly looking for the fact of how can we increase our response time. So I will put on the table that I would like to see that if the board, or through Mr. Schultz, could talk about maybe thinking about the fact that we might need to end up looking at satellite locations, a small satellite. I'm not talking a big satellite, but being able to have maybe one or two bases somewhere in the northern section that might be able to improve our response time. But that's just dispatching everything out of our Auxiliary Services Building. As much growth as we're seeing, it sure is sometimes a challenge to get to the other side of town during peak hours. We also, you know, we always look at our growth. We need to grow. As far as our staffing, we need to make sure that we have enough people onboard to drive those buses. We need to make sure that those people are trained. We need bus drivers, we need mechanics, we need staff, we need planners, we need supervisors as a district as we grow. As we grow. The facilities is just like, we already in the nicest facility, and we've outgrown that facility. We're looking at our facilities and our vehicles. Once again, that's what the mission goal is, is to provide that safe, reliable, and on-time transportation. So we need to make sure that we have enough vehicles to cover all that.
And before questions, I just want to just give a kudos to Art. He really was the guinea pig for this department's spotlight, and he really took it on with great gusto. But Art always talks about our facilities as being like the gem of the southeast. So that auxiliary service is the garage. But I'll tell you what, this guy right here, Art, is the gem and the envy of the state. Like, every district wishes they had an Art Whitaker. And it's the people inside of that facility that really make it super effective, and I'm very appreciative for his leadership.
Thank you. It is a team effort. I mean, not one person can effect all that change, but it's a team. And that team actually happens to reside at the Auxiliary Services Building.
So I personally love the idea of doing the department spotlight. I think it gives us valuable information, and even hopefully, as the public watches, you know, when they're concerned about if schools caught off, or we have a delay, a certain bus driver doesn't show up, and just all the servers you're providing, and the number of miles that are driven daily, when you put all of that in perspective, it's a phenomenal feat to do what you do every day.
I appreciate that.
So thank you for presenting tonight, and also for this information. Board members, questions?
I have a quick question. So Art, this was perfect timing. I've gotten several emails regarding stop-arm cameras, and I know safety's a huge priority. What's your thoughts on that? Do we have anything like that in place, or has that been looked at?
We do. DPI puts out some information every year in regards to some funding. They put a limited amount of funding out there, and if your county would like to participate in that, so we reach out every year. It's not much, but if it's a free one or two systems, we'll take it. So we apply for that funding each and every year, and we get those cameras installed on our buses. You don't know which ones they are, and we don't want you to know which ones they are. So if the walk arm comes out, and the stop arm comes out, and you go by that, we have a video of that. And we go ahead and we turn that over to law enforcement. We have a nice clear picture of the face, and of the license plates, and a video, and...
Long as it's not mine.
And the next call we make is, we fill out a report, and we hand all that information over to law enforcement, and they take it from there. We're just the information gatherer. But the stop-arm video camera is the, quote, "the vehicle" that we use to catch people that go around our stop arms.
That is great information. I think the general perception is, we do not have anything like that in place. So it sounds like we've been doing it, and it's a good thing that we don't know that we've been doing it. That's great. Thank you very much. That's good information.
Thank you.
So when your drivers get onto the bus now, do they log in, and everything is done from the bus? They do their check-ins? Because, I mean, there was a transition when we first got on the board to try to go to that, so that is fully effective with all your buses?
Yes, sir. That's a, we became, last year at this point in time, we became 100% Zonar capable. So there's a handheld device on every bus, and the bus driver has an ID. And when they get on, they start their pre-trip inspection. This wand basically does their in-time and their out-time, and it forces them outside to do a visual inspection of the bus. There's dots on the outside of the bus, which they must hit with the wand in order to make sure that you looked at that tire, you looked at that bumper, you looked at this, you looked at that. So it forces them to do their pre-trip and their post-trip. And it's also their paycheck when they log in, and then they log out. So all of that information is captured. When they drop it in the wand, and they drop the wand in the holder, it magically transmits overnight to the payroll department, and we get to see their on-and-off times, plus an electronic log as well. So it's very beneficial, and it comes with GPS, so we know exactly where that bus is at all times.
I have one more question. You said that you needed eight more minivans. Is this to replace part of the existing fleet? Or is, you know, and I guess you have a certain number of miles that you get on a minivan before you replace them, or is this what you need to keep up with the growth?
So we're, to point of clarification, we're talking minivans, the McKinney-Vento vans, or mini-buses? Which one?
The minivans.
Mini-vans.
That don't require a CDL.
Right. Okay. So that is, that's an initiative that was started a while ago. It started before my tenure. But those vans are starting to reach a certain amount of capacity on miles, and they're becoming a little bit more of a maintenance-driven item each and every day. So we will, of those 20, they range from anywhere from, you know, five years old all the way to maybe two or three years old. So there will be a point in time where we will have to start trying to figure out how we need to put those minivans on a replacement program as well.
Mr. Schumay, so we have the minivans and the mini-buses, and neither of those require the CDL. The mini-buses is actually a little bit larger than a minivan. What's the capacity?
14.
14. Those do not require a CDL. We have eight of those, and we have four on order right now.
And we have a new high school, so we're going to be placing those, we're going to be placing that mini-bus asset at the new high school as well. So we're trying to give that flexibility to our schools and placing them there.
Question I had was, how old is the bus garage already?
It's 10 years old, isn't it? I think it's almost 10. Yep, 10 years old.
It's 10 years old.
10 years old. 09, I do believe it was built in 09. Yep.
Let's see. I'd also, I'd like to echo that I appreciate the presentation. I've learned a lot about transportation. I think the public did, too, and appreciate the job that the whole staff, as the drivers are keeping our kids safe. The one thing that was on my, you know, that's been on my heart, or I think I've talked to you about it once or twice before, was since we have GPS, and I think in Charlotte-Mecklenburg, they've got it now. So if a parent wants to know where their bus is, where their, so they don't have to walk out, like in the wintertime when it's 15 degrees, to walk out there and stand there for a half hour waiting for the bus, that they can see where that bus is on that route, and when they can go and grab the bus. Is that something that we're looking into, or something that we could do?
So we, our GPS provider is Zonar, so they basically have our GPS signal. So they don't have a product of their own. So we have to mirror with a third-party app, or a third-party. So we have to find out who is eligible, or who would like to take on the Zonar signal, and translate it over to a map, or graphical representation of where it would be. We do have some, we do have some people that were able, interested in that, but it does come at a pretty hefty charge. When we went ahead and talked about this in senior leadership, we talked about the safety aspect of it. We wanted to make sure that we were doing the right thing by allowing, there's two versions of it. You can get the full version, or you can get the light version. The full version has all the student information in it, and the light version just basically has the position of the bus. So we wanted to make sure that we were doing the right thing by a safety standpoint, and not releasing too much information. And so a lot of that was taken back, and I think we need to discuss that further with our safety committees and our safety people to make sure that not student-sensitive information...
There's balance there, I'm sure, and I'm sure that Charlotte's dealt with that as well.
Yep.
So I'm sure they could give us a little guidance on how they've done that.
Right.
I'd just say, having experienced the last two districts I was in, it's been very, the implementation of both of those districts has been very glitchy at best. So they've had some really, probably more frustration with it than, and then the hoped accomplishment, the benefit that they would get out of it. But it's something that we need to continue to monitor, because it's a technology that can really help and serve our families really well. But I'm not 100% convinced it's where it needs to be quite yet from a technology perspective.
Technology keeps getting better, so hopefully it will be to a point that we can really serve our parents and our families.
We'll keep it on our radar.
All right. Some of those options also might require some review by the policy committee, too, about student research and information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll move on to our next topic. So next up, we have our CFO, Kelly Klutz, and the auditors from Anderson, Smith, and White. Hello, welcome. And before we get started, I always bury my SRO note. Thank you, Deputy Jesse Gatlin from Royal Oaks, for being with us tonight. So which you went up there first, I guess?
We can go over the required communication letter, stuff like that.
Yes. No, thank you. So what I've got here this evening for you is, and my name's Adam Superk, by the way, with Anderson, Smith, White, your independent auditor. We've conducted the audit for Cabarrus County Schools for the year ended June 30, 2019. We've issued a set of financial statements to the LGC, which is currently being reviewed, and we've issued a letter here to the board as the governing body that has hired us to audit management and audit the financial statements. We provide this letter to you to let you know how that engagement went, if there were any issues in dealing with management, any issues around timing, if there were any new accounting standards that came up, if there were any disagreements on how to apply accounting standards, if there were any aspects of the audit, or in dealings with management, or obtaining information that we wanted to let you know about, we would include it in this letter here. And there's nothing unusual here. There's actually no significant new accounting policies this year, and the audit went according to plan, as it has every year. So again, but that's just the standard letter to the board. All right. I've also brought a presentation that is kind of a shortened version of some highlighted information. Our audit includes producing a 75-page set of financial statements that you've also received. But included in that 75 pages is just a lot of information regarding accounting policies and principles, and how to calculate actuarial valuations of OPEB liabilities and pension liabilities. And so some of the main points of data in that 75 pages kind of gets lost. So we just provide a little summary here to just highlight some of the key pieces of information. But I will tell you, if you have any questions on the 75 pages, I'd be happy to answer those. And that those financial statements were issued with an unqualified, clean opinion letter. So we believe that the financial statements fairly represent the position of the school system, and the results of the operations for the year ended June 30, 2019, and that these summary data points were obtained and brought down from that document, and are also accurate. So again, we'll start here with the cash on hand. We combined the general fund and the other special revenue fund, kind of to analyze where you sit as far as your local cash and local fund balance. And you just see here, over the last three years, a growing balance of cash in those two funds, over $22 million of cash on hand. Along with that cash, most of it is, or most of it is available for fund balance. And so your fund balance as of June 30, 2019, combined is right around $20 million. And most of that is available for appropriation. You have some categories of fund balance that are not available. Your inventories and prepaid, those are things that you've already spent. That is not cash on hand. So you can't appropriate that as fund balance. You also have restrictions for receivables. North Carolina law prevents you from spending cash that you have not yet received. So any fund balance that's in the form of receivables is restricted for the next year after you receive it. So we do have some categories that just are not available, but for the most part, of your $20 million available, about $19 million, or $20 million of fund balance, about $19 million of it is available for appropriation, for spending within your budget for the 1920 This just shows you the last three years, your revenues and expenditures in those funds. Again, with nearly $80 million of revenue and expenditures, your gain, or your increase in fund balance for those last two years. 2018 was about a $2 million increase in fund balance, and this year was a $1,505,000 increase in fund balance. So again, those are positive numbers, but as large as a million dollars sounds, it's a very small percentage of your total budget in those funds.
I think it's got ahead on the slide, Steve. I just want to make sure you're on the right slides.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. $80 million of revenue and expenditures in the general fund and the other special revenue fund, and then that very small net number, the very small column, that's essentially your net income, or your increase in fund balance in those two funds. And those combined totaled $1 million for June 30, 2019 year. And you can see on the next slide, all of the actual numbers that are in those last, or those first three slides. So you can see your 2019 column, cash and cash equivalents, $22 million. Inventory and prepaid's of $1 million. And so that $1 million is non-spendable. You also have $279,000 of restricted fund balance for receivables, and leaves your available fund balance, making up the two numbers, the assigned and the unassigned. So while you have $19 million available for appropriation, you have certain assignments that basically set aside for retirement payments, for what's quote-unquote "spiking" payments, your workers' comp self-insurance plan, your fund balance appropriated in next year's budget, and also revenues that are in the special revenue fund. They come with stipulations. Those are usually state and federal grants, and those funds are assigned by virtue of...
Those are the things you check in your audit?
All of this, absolutely. The, from the cash number all the way down to fund balance, all of it is verified and This is just a roll forward of your capital outlay. While your capital outlay fund has spent $62 million this year, you're only carrying about $308,000 of fund balance. You're in the process of building new schools, and so a lot of activity in there is related to the construction of those new schools, and renovations, and various projects. So those were your... So, those were your governmental funds. You also have your school food service fund, which is a significant business-type fund. It, it does not have the luxury that your governmental funds have in that it has to record a liability for the pension and OPEB liabilities. Because it's a business-type fund, it operates on a full accrual basis, so any associated liability actually gets booked right into fund balance. So, that causes giant swings in net income and creates a negative fund balance, but it kind of hides what is the truly operational number for that fund. So, you've got to kind of look past just the change in fund balance to get a real sense of the child nutrition fund and how it's operated for the year. So, while your net income for that fund was $1.3 million, the increase in cash was only $220,000, or $220,000. So, that increase in net position was related to the net expense or negative expense of your three pension and OPEB plans. You have a pension plan, a retirement health plan, and a disability income plan. Those are all part of those, of the 19% retirement rate that you pay to the state. The retirement health plan had a benefit of decreasing a liability, and that decrease in liability exceeded the increase in liability on the pension plan, resulting in, again, net income that really wasn't cash or operational. It was really just related to those state health benefits and post-retirement benefits. There will be a new GASB next year that actually takes all of those liabilities and puts them into an agency fund, just to get away from those liabilities reflecting in individual funds. So, the financial statements, again, I think over the years have been getting more and more difficult to really pull out useful information, and part of this is related to those GASBs that required you to record these liabilities. We're now going to take all of those and put them in an agency fund all by themselves. So, they get out of the net position for governmental activities and business-type activities, so. But, anyway, the, as I was saying, when you're looking at your school food service fund, you can't just look at the fact that two years ago, you lost $1 million, but this year, you gained $1 million. It's really about that cash, that change in cash. So, when you see a decrease of cash from 2017 to 2018, and then 2018 to 2019, you added, like I said, $220,000 in cash. So, total revenues and expenditures in that fund, $14 million, and 12.8 compared to $15 million last year. Again, that is not because salaries and wages went down, that is not because you spent less on food, that is mainly pension and OPEB expense-driven.
Does that affect the number?
Those are students, yep.
Does that affect the number?
The higher the free and reduced percentage, the more reimbursements you get from the federal government. You get a little bit of reimbursement for every meal you serve, free, reduced, or paid. But, with higher free, you get that full free reduced lunch price.
Is that why you're saying?
Yeah, it provides some, a gauge of where you stand as far as with, with higher free and reduced percentages, you'll see more federal reimbursement and less sales, because the paid lunch aspect and paid meal aspect is lower, but you get higher federal reimbursement. So, it really is just to kind of gauge your food sales versus your federal reimbursement number.
So, we should use that number for...
Yeah.
That's what we should be using that number for.
Yeah, as, again, as a gauge of the revenues. Now, you're actually in a unique position where you're converting some of your elementary schools from a traditional, single-student identification of this student is free, this is reduced, and this is paid, to what's now is the CEP program where they take the overall percentage of that school, they all eat for free, and then you get reimbursed for all those meals at that percentage, essentially.
So, does that help us or hurt?
It helps participation. The more kids that eat for free, the more participation there is, and the more participation means more reimbursements. And as long as you can keep salary costs in line, the food cost isn't enough to, the increase in participation covers the food cost. So, it really comes down to your salary management in those kitchens.
I always like to take an opportunity when we see a free and reduced lunch percentage like that, that in our own community, as we did the school supply drive, people do not realize that more than two out of every five children are getting a free lunch, and that how significant the needs are in this prosperous county. They forget that, you know, all the new homes in Harrisburg, all the new homes over by Concord Mills, that that's not the majority, or I should say, it's more than half, but there's a lot of needs out there, so.
Yeah, the CEP program, we've seen that at a lot of districts that are just 100%, all their schools, everybody eats for free, and there are significant increases, sometimes as much as 10% increase in participation. And whether those kids were originally free and reduced, or were paid but couldn't afford to eat and weren't eating, now they're also getting that same free meal. Even if, even if a kid is only taking the main entree off of that tray and eating it, that's potentially more than they were eating before. So, while the participation goes up, cost does go up as far as food costs, but it really boils down to that salary management in those schools, so. All right. Again, this just kind of highlights the expenditures and the various funding sources. So, we talk a lot about fund balance, because that's essentially how much money you have to weather changes in budgets or legislation mandated salary increases. You know, that fund balance ends up being a very large budgeting tool and managing tool. But, when you see the local funding of around $80 million compared to, say for instance, that state funding of nearly $200 million, that kind of puts it in perspective just, you know, where that, where your funding sources are. And so, this year, nearly $200 million from the state, that was an increase from previous years because of, again, state mandated salary increases and your growth in ADM. So, a lot of those dollars are actually provided in position allotments. And so, you, the goal is always to manage those positions, pay the highest people out of those position allotments to save, save dollars from local sources or federal sources that are more, that are dollar-driven, so. Again, this is on a, just the same information, but on a per pupil basis. So, you see your state funding is nearly $6,000 per pupil, local funding over $2,000, and then, you know, federal programs, it's a very small percentage of the budget, so. Again, this is the data for those previous two charts. So, you can see $76 million in local, $62 million in capital outlay, but that capital outlay, that fluctuates. So, when we look at per pupil spending, you actually usually exclude that capital outlay, it's just presented here for information. But, $198 million in state, $11.8 million in federal, and an ADM of $33,000, which is 500 more than the previous year, which was 500 more than the previous year, which is a new school every year. And so, you know, those are the challenges you face going forward with continued growth like that. And then, you can see the per pupil expenditures. You know, that state $6,000 is 400 more than last year. And again, that's heavily driven by state salary increases and then the benefit increases that, you know, every, every individual that you hire now for, in a position that is eligible for benefits, you're talking almost 40% increase, or 40% additional funding for their benefits between the $6,000 a year for healthcare and the 20% that you're sending to retirement and the 7.65% for FICA. So, those numbers, when you're, when you're looking in terms of hiring an individual at a $50,000 a year salary, you're looking at over $20,000 a year in benefits. And so, that really puts, puts a strain and puts the need for that continued funding growth as costs continue to rise. So, $8,690 per student excluding the capital outlay fund, so. And then, again, in summarizing the 75-page financial statement, it's not just a financial statement audit, it's also a compliance audit. We audit your state and federal dollars to make sure that they adhere to the applicable state and federal program requirements for each of those funds, and search for funds spent improperly or misused, and we noted none of those, no findings and no question costs. And really, that's to be expected from a district this caliber. So, again, a clean audit, both financially and compliance-wise.
Well, thank you, Adam, for giving us a good report, but congratulations, Kelly, to you and your team once again. We know you did good work, but this is the annual proof of that. Board members, any questions or comments?
How long does it take you to do an audit?
We start coming out in the spring to do some compliance testing. So, sometime in May is when we come out for a week. Me and my partner that I work with, we come out here in May for a week. We come back for a couple of days in July to go out to some schools and do some individual school testing. One of your funds, your individual school funds, the actual funds collected at the schools, we audit that at each of your schools on a kind of rotational basis. And then, we come back in the first part of September for a week and do the financial statement audit, and then spend about 50 hours writing 75 pages of financial statements.
In other words, it's pretty thorough.
Yes, oh yeah, 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 it's very thorough. It's 350 hours of time spent planning and initiating and auditing, and then summarizing the results, so.
Every year, I try to get you to get out of your professional comfort zone and to say something like, "Cabarrus is run pretty darn good." But, I just have not, you know, managed to do that. But, you did say "of this caliber."
Yes.
So, can we, can we rely on that adjective or that statement there as a high praise from your professional perspective?
It is, and I think every year, I try to give you a little bit of what you asked for, and I do have something new for you this year. So, I don't, I don't seek to compare districts, because sometimes the ones that get compared to don't like it. But, we do, we do districts of all sizes. In fact, at, I had a 2:00 meeting up in Burnsville for their 2,000 ADM little school system that they had their board meeting today, and they get the same dollars you do, and they don't, the same programs, it's just you get, you get an extra zero added on. But, we also do districts like Johnson County, Brunswick County, Union County, which are very comparable to you. And we see, you know, the caliber of staff at all of these, and we also see the financial condition of some of these districts. And some of those districts are in the news and not for good reasons. It is very difficult to manage funds in an environment of such increasing costs, increasing political divisiveness, and so, whenever I talk about Cabarrus County Schools at other counties, they joke and say, you know, that you're, you're better than everybody, and I try not to do that. But, it's a close run between, between you and Brunswick County. The staff at Brunswick County has been doing their job really well for a long time, and you two are some of my favorite places to go. So, not just because they're down in Southport, but, yeah.
I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, obviously, thanks to Kelly and her group, we appreciate that, and thanks to Adam, he explains it well to a former English teacher. But, when we were having the discussion, and especially because the board's going to talk about some budget things here in just a little while, when we got to the end, because again, we do have, when you talk about a $250 million or $200, a little bit more than that budget, that's a lot of money. But, kind of what you need free to be able to run that type of organization, we talked about when we went over it, and when you talk about $20 million of fund balance, well, 10 of that is already accounted for, as he uses example, like he said, for workman's comp. So, technically, the board could spend that money, but that wouldn't be a really good decision. And so, when we were done with that, and we kind of came out and said, "Well, this year", what Adam said in the meeting, you know, we pretty much came out and added about $700,000 above zero was the number that he gave. And he said, you know, "In this organization, what you want to try to do is come out even." And he said, "So, and when you have a $250 million budget plus $700,000, it's the same as coming out even." And I said, "Well, will you say that at the board meeting?" So, if you want to elaborate on that a little bit, but trying to, sometimes people hear a number like that, and they think it's so large, but having enough available cash to move around and run the organization, it's a really pretty small amount, so I don't know if you can comment on that.
Yes, certainly. And so, the $700,000 number is the general fund increase, and you had another $300,000 in other special revenue. But, to put that $1 million in context, you can look at it one of two ways. Even if you look at it just within those two funds, $80 million of revenue and expenditures in one year, 1 million of that, it's just over 1%. That's, that's pretty much break even. If you're looking at, you know, trying to hit a bullseye that is $80 million wide and you hit it, you know, at $700,000, that, to me, is essentially break even. Now, that might mean next year, you use $500,000. Well, that's break even as well. So, break even, you know, when you're talking about $80 million is a very large window, in my opinion. And then, when you expand that past just the local budget into the $300 million budget, and that's what your fund balance is for, you're, when the state finally decides on what the budget is going to be and what the raises are going to be, or what the, they're not going to fund those ideas at the same rate that they, that they pass them. So, you'll have to, and even just the staff that you already pay out of local, those will be funded with local dollars. Any decisions that legislatures make that aren't funded by the state will be funded with local dollars. You know, that $20 million of fund balance, $10 million available, that is, that is your safety net for the next hurricane that blows through. And some of these districts that we audit, we actually do quite a few that were hit by Hurricane Florence, and we saw bills of $8 and $9 million for Servpro just to dry out and tear up carpet in flooded buildings. And it doesn't take having too many schools with two feet of water in them before you've got significant funding issues. And some of those districts that were hit by these disasters, they got better service by having money available to start paying vendors right away. And so, again, that, that safety net is more than just a financial safety net, it's, it could mean the difference between... It could mean the difference between, you know, opening a school that's affected by a disaster 10 days sooner. So, you know, those are some of the things that we're seeing across the state this year that is just unusual. And, you know, and again, breaking even, so to speak, that should be the goal every year. That means you're living within your means and not taking the burden of reoccurring expenditures through fund balance. And that's, I think we see a lot of the smaller districts get into that trouble. They see a need and just decide to fund it with fund balance, but when you start funding reoccurring expenditures, they only go up. So trying to live within those means every year, you know, from an accountant's perspective would be the goal, so.
Yeah.
Okay, board members, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Adam.
Yep.
Thank you, Kelly. We will move on to our next agenda item, 4.03, the realignment report. Deputy Superintendent Lynn Reimer and Ms. Frances Lane, welcome.
Good evening, board members and staff. I want to introduce first Ms. Frances Lane. I don't know if all of you have met her. She is our GIS analyst, program coordinator and guru of all maps and data in the district right now. We're really thrilled to have her as part of our team and has made a true impact for us. So, right now, we want to give you just a realignment report on where we are. This is based on our 20th day data. We geocoded that, that would be Francis and the mouse in her pocket, I guess. When I say "we," I didn't. Geocoded that this weekend for 33,613 students. And our estimated student impact with this realignment is just at 3,816 or 11.4%. Goals for this presentation tonight are to provide you with updated information based on that 20th day, to share with you the communication that we have done this past week, which is we've updated our website, created a Q&amp;A there, updated our Find My School Map app, which is really all over our website and our schools' websites. We've given written notification to the families that have been impacted, and we've trained points of contact at every school to help communicate with families as they have questions. Please note, Ms. Jones, that this information is being used as cross-functional administrative tool, and this is completely preliminary. It is not to be used for allotments or projections or anything else. So as soon as we start putting some numbers on paper, everybody wants to use those as our projections. And I'm just trying to qualify that this is not next year's projections and should not be used that way. But there is a lot of planning that goes into students and staff and everybody being realigned, and so we wanted to make sure we at least started with something. And using our 20th day data gives us some really early data to use, keeping in mind that program choice and growth and all that is not part of this. So we'll start, we're going to go through each level. We're going to show you which areas are impacted, the total number of students impacted and where they're going and coming from. If you'll look at this map, this is our elementary schools that are impacted. That's Patriots, Harrisburg, AT Allen, Rocky River and Hickory Ridge for a total of 951 students. Again, please keep in mind, this is based on a geocode of a student's address, students that are currently sitting in a seat and their address, okay? So when we look at, down here on the bottom in the pink, this is the new Hickory Ridge Elementary School. You can see the, I think of an ice cream cone when I see that. But the pink area, the yellow is the new boundary, the black serves as the old boundary, and this is Harrisburg Elementary. So you can see this area here is new for Hickory Ridge. This area here was Patriots and now is an AT Allen and Rocky River, is now Patriots, excuse me, comes out of Rocky River and AT Allen. So those are the areas that are impacted. So here's a chart that kind of shows you. For example, AT Allen, current enrollment on the 20th day was 824 students. Number of students that are realigned, we have 158, and it's red because those students are going to Patriots. And our estimated range of enrollment at AT Allen will be between 600 and 25 and 675 students. Again, that deals with growth, program choice, transfers, all those different things. Harrisburg, current 1,043, they are sending geographically 345 students to Hickory Ridge Elementary School, and an estimated range of enrollment, 600 to 700. The new Hickory Ridge obviously doesn't have any students yet, but they will gain 431 from Patriots and 345 from Harrisburg with a range of 725 to 825. This number here will be highly impacted at Patriots due to our program choice. Patriots is sending 431 to the new Hickory Ridge Elementary, getting 158 from AT Allen and 17 from Rocky River for a range from 875 to 950. Again, notice that's a pretty big range. We expect some program choice numbers there to fluctuate that a little bit. And then Rocky River is sending 17 students to Patriots.
Explain program choice.
I'm sorry?
Explain program choice.
So program choice, obviously, we won't have those numbers until around December, initial numbers, and then finalize those in February. Right now, Patriots is a STEM magnet, and therefore, we want to make sure our program choice students have the opportunity to stay in a STEM magnet. And so we'll be working with those families, and they received a different letter of notification as well in the mail to explain to them exactly what their options are.
And that's providing their own transportation.
Yes, sir. So our middle schools, all of our attendance zones were impacted here for a total of 705 students. You can see the areas here, this was Hickory Ridge, now going to CC Griffin. This was Winkler, now going to J. and Fries. This was Hickory Ridge, now going to J. and Fries. This is Northwest Cabarrus Middle going to Winkler, and this is Harris Road going to Northwest. We have a small portion here at Concord High School going to Mount Pleasant. So our numbers here, you can see, I'll go through these quickly. CC Griffin is getting 165 students from Hickory Ridge Middle. Concord Middle is sending 12 to Mount Pleasant. Hickory Ridge Middle School is sending 165 to CC Griffin and 72 to J. and Fries. Harris Road is sending 48 to Winkler and 69 to Northwest. I will bring your attention to Harris Road just a little bit in the numbers here, just a little concerning about their overall numbers there, and we'll be watching that closely. Winkler is sending 153 to J. and Fries but gaining 48 from Harris Road and 185 from Northwest. Their numbers, again, are going to be close or more than they currently have. J. and Fries will grow, they'll gain 153 from Winkler and 72 from Hickory Ridge. Mount Pleasant will gain 12 from Concord, and Northwest Cabarrus will send 185 to Winkler and gain 69 from Harris Road.
Should we continue to need that?
Yes, sir. Hence, Mr. Schultz is going to do his job very well, along with our facilities department, and open our school on time. He promises. Okay, our high schools, each attendance zone is impacted here as well. Will we move in the bulk of our students through the high school zone, obviously? We'll be moving 2,160 or they'll be realigned. So you can see the area here at Northwest that was Cox Mill. You can see our zone for West Cabarrus in the middle. You can see a portion of Hickory Ridge going to J. and Robinson, and this portion of Central coming to Hickory Ridge, as well as this portion of Central going to West Cabarrus. This portion of Concord High going to Mount Pleasant. These numbers, very quickly, Central Cabarrus High School will send 123 to Hickory Ridge and 337 to West Cabarrus. Concord will send 16 to Mount Pleasant and 68 to West Cabarrus. Cox Mill High School will send 285 to Northwest. Again, oh, excuse me, sorry. Let's go back. Sorry, Dame, my fault, hit the wrong button. I can advance it from there. Thank you, sorry, trying to point. I'll bring your attention to Cox Mill High School. Again, a concern here, and we'll keep a very close eye on that. Number, is that still over capacity?
So that's the projected for next year after the
So, Board, Madam Chair, it is a preliminary range, yes. So it's, I don't like the word "projection," but it is close. It is in a range of what we expect. Hickory Ridge, golly, Dame, Lynn. Excuse me. Hickory Ridge, I may have to get Frances the pointer. Hickory Ridge is going to send 325 to Robinson and get 125 or receive 123, excuse me, from Central. Their number two is still very high, so we'll watch that one closely. J. and Robinson will gain 325 from Hickory Ridge but send 509 to West Cabarrus. Mount Pleasant will gain 16 from Concord. West Cabarrus will, and Northwest Cabarrus will send 497 to West Cabarrus and gain 285 from Cox Mill. And then you can see where West Cabarrus will be gaining their students. Again, we caution that program choice, our academies and some other issues could impact these numbers. These are not in stone, these are based on their geographic address at this point.
And Lynn?
Yes, sir.
I have to ask this. Those, all those slides mean that the mobile classrooms used at different facilities are all going to be reassessed as we go forward? But can you make any statements about that, or is that too much detail to hold you to at this point?
Definitely can't hold me to it because these are preliminary.
Really?
But I would say that we will have some movement with mobile units. We assess that every year. Chuck Taylor and his group, along with Mr. Schultz, will have probably already started some of that and will continue to start and review those things. There will be some areas that will keep their mobile units, specifically some of our elementary schools that there were no movement at, such as Cox Mill Elementary and some of those. We'll obviously keep all of theirs, and you can see here, there's a few places that, if I were guessing today, I would say, yes, they will stay there, and then Mr. Schultz and his department will be working on the movement of those.
Can you explain the West Cabarrus number of students realigned doesn't match the estimated range of enrollment?
Program choice. So we have a lot of students coming from Northwest and Central who are both in a STEM program that geographically sit in West Cabarrus zone and will have the opportunity to stay in those programs. So just real quick, this is just a recap of our communication plan, and thanks to Ronnie Boone and her department, as well as a lot of people in my office, that it takes quite a bit to communicate individually with 4,000 people, as well as the entire district. So we appreciate the support from all the different departments to make that happen. We shared this or similar presentation to leadership, it got redone, and then we presented that to our principals on the 24th. We updated our website with Q&amp;As starting the 27th. We trained all of our points of contact at our schools on October 1st. We prepared and printed letters for the impacted students. Dr. Lauder did a connected message to all families, October 4th, the letters were mailed, and today is October 7th, so we're presenting to the board.
I guess I'll say wow. After all the realignment and how many months this board went through with the help of your team, Lynn, I actually am pretty happy with the configuration of the new districts. There's a few, I look back at now and say, maybe we should have done something else, but there was such a give and take, you had to balance it all together. So I think from the standpoint of our goal to always accomplish those small, close-in groups around the school, we did it the best we could with the locations. Obviously, there's still some schools that are at risk of overcrowding, but we're going to talk about that in a few minutes here with capital plan and where we put things.
Yeah, so I would say that a concern for us, and you'll see it, I don't know how much you'll see in our capital plan, we probably should, is Cox Mill Elementary, they're well over their projection this year, and so that would be the only one that I would say that the board needs to keep their eye on as well, besides, you know, that whole area in general, but Cox Mill Elementary is well over their projection.
Okay, so actually, Cox Mill Elementary doesn't show up on this chart because we didn't move anybody.
Because they were not impacted. So that's why I say that.
So what is their number, and can we kind of get that whole list of where the schools are now?
Absolutely. We'll work on that and get it to you this week. We have a lot of different information, so if you'll send to me in writing what you would like to see, we'll be happy to try to get that to the board for future conversations.
Madam Chair, I had that same question, and I'd like to see it expanded to include capacity. You know, an estimated range of enrollment tells us one number, but the capacity of the school really puts it in perspective.
We certainly can. If you'll just tell me exactly what you want, because a lot of you like to look at it in different ways, so I want to make sure I get exactly what it is that you need.
Are you changing any programs that'll change the capacity?
Royal Oaks going to the K6 and K8 will change some things. Off the top of my head, I don't think there's any real changes to programs that will really change, other than just our K3 class size that'll be in the final year.
No, within the final year.
Next year.
Yeah, 21, and then have one more year after.
Okay, so two more years, then.
Just, I'll say, close numbers, doesn't have to be perfect, but what's Cox Mill Elementary at this year right now? They were over 1,100, I know, the first week, but.
If you, I can look it up in just a second. I'll say it's well, I mean, they're like, how many over are my projection for them? Because you've had to support that. 60, 70, 80 over projection, I think. I'll get that to you in just a minute, I can pull it up.
Yeah, just when Mr. Schultz is doing the activity with us, if you could let us know what that number is.
We'll have that by then, yes.
Yeah, there, according to this, on day 22, they were at 1,130 kids.
And we projected them at like 1060.
And could we include the number of mobile units available at each of those schools as well?
Yes, just please make sure we get that down in writing, so I'll get to everything you need.
Madam Chair, you're going to handle that?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Because how the mobile units are used, as in if they're for being used for resource rooms, that doesn't mean it's a 30-student room. So they're just moving things out.
That's why I wanted "available."
Yeah.
Yeah.
Board members, any questions?
I just want to say how much we appreciate Ms. Reimer and Frances working on this. I know Frances was working all weekend to try to, if you paid attention to Adam's presentation there, we ended up at 33,000. If you notice now, we've gained 600 students since the summer. So Frances was trying to make sure she updated all that to get you, again, Lynn wants to make sure that we're not, these are not numbers we can plant a flag on because they change and they vary, but at least tonight, this is the best information that we can get you, and that's from their hard work and Frances's hard work to really try to make those maps and that information. A lot of information, you know, that people could process. And again, like she said, mailing out lots of people in the room, clerical staff in the building, you know, mailing out 4,000 letters to, again, try to communicate with people as much as possible, and they've certainly done a great job with that.
Can we get an information on how many people are visiting the website, that specific?
I guess we'll ask, yeah, Ms. Boone said we'll send that to you.
Okay, next up, one of our favorite topics ever, Agenda Item 5.01 for the Capital Improvement Plan Project Sequencing. But Mr. Schultz, I just want to kind of go over logistics, just high level, if that's okay.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Schultz is going to go through, I guess, part of your presentation or all of it, maybe. We're actually going to have a real work session activity tonight. And that is, we are going to ask the cameras to turn off, we're going to turn off the mics, we're going to talk in our small groups and come up with whatever he's guiding us to do. We will come back on camera for reporting out on what our small groups came up with. So there won't be any secrets. We just want to be able to have, like I said, a true work session environment. And Ms. Highsmith, if you would like to join the group with Mr. Schumaker and Ms. Blackwell, so you can participate as well. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Schultz.
Great, thank you. Good evening, once again. This is my pleasure to bring back the feedback that you gave me, basically from the August 5th and August 12th meetings regarding the capital plan. And tonight, we're really going to look at this sequencing. So just think about logically how our projects connect, how they don't connect, what our needs are. So we'll just jump in, and at said point, it will turn into a true work session. So that was one of the things, I think, coming to Cabarrus County, knowing that you guys do a work session prior to the business meeting, was actually excited about that, and I know that sounds a little nerdy, but to be able to roll up your sleeves and, you know, really think about the collaboration that it takes, the give and take and the really good discussions, and that's what helps you know the content really well. So, and this is really all in preparation for a joint meeting with the county commissioners on October 29th. So to be able to kind of present to them, these are our needs. You know, we've heard Lynn talk about, a little bit about, the numbers in our district, and we can look at those further as well. But just to think about where our county's going, what our mission and purpose is, and then how our facilities kind of what our mission and purpose is, and then how our facilities kind of match those things. So with that, we'll jump in feet first. Again, the disclaimer, all the cost estimates here are kind of present day based on what we know right now and certainly the situation is based on current, you know, context of economy, market growth, things like that. So that's the disclaimer as we move forward. So back on August 5th and August 12th, you all provided a lot of feedback, had some really great discussion. We met prior to that and had some great discussions. So these were the takeaways as I sifted through all of that, that there were some beliefs that I heard really kind of emanate from the group. The first one you'll see was the prioritization of replacing two aging downtown Concord schools with opportunities for capacity growth. So making those downtown schools a little bit larger relieves growth, but then also those are our oldest facilities within the district. The second one was the prioritization of the Northwest section of Cabarrus County. We know that's the high-growth section. You know, we've switched some strategy there. We were once looking at Central Cabarrus High School as a priority. Now it's really that Northwest area of the county where we see the rapid, rapid growth and we certainly see that in our numbers as they're reported out this year. And then lastly, the addition of Beverly Hills Elementary to the capital plan as voted upon at the August 12th session. So those are the three beliefs and/or actions that kind of came out of those August meetings that I took away and kind of captured for this meeting. And those things we need to keep in the back of our minds as we work through this plan. And then our goals and outcomes for this session is really to set us up for the business meeting that then sets us up for the joint meeting on the 29th. So that's prioritizing the capital projects to meet the needs of our students and families and neighborhoods that we serve. And then as, again, as the preparation for that joint meeting on the 29th. And then you'll finalize the sequencing. You know, as I'm kind of staying away from talking about dates, I think that order is just as important, maybe more important than the dates that we slap on these projects. So looking at that Board of Education business meeting to finalize that sequencing and this is the work session portion of that. So this may look familiar. This is a slide that I captured from the August 5th work session that was presented to you. The highlighted in green is what's already been funded and then what you'll notice is what was presented August 5th. So that was prior to all of the discussion and decision-making. And a couple of things I want to point out there. So the construction of Northwest High School, we put it at 83.5 million. I just wanted to point that out. There are a lot of dominos that fall in place with that when that project is done and we'll see that here momentarily. So keep that in the back of your mind. And then also, what we did in this for presentation purposes here, so we had a line that was the renovation of existing facilities for reuse. So you'll notice Beverly Hills in there is in that, so we took that out. Beverly Hills is no longer in the renovation. It is a new facility that's being proposed, so you'll see that reflected in the subsequent slides. And then what you'll also see is how, what is the impact of now renovating these facilities? So Glenn Center houses really two kind of central figures. It's the Opportunity School. I know we sometimes just monominalously, I don't know if that's a word, Chris, with the English teacher. So we kind of think of that as a singular term, right, for everything that encompasses Glenn Center, but it's really the Opportunity School and then it's Central Office. We have a lot of Central Office staff there. Kids Plus, we have Accountability as well as the Technology Staff is over there. So, and then we have Mary Frances Wall. And those are all interconnected. I think as we think about our sequencing, we have to think about how those buildings, the Glenn Center, R. Brown McAllister, Mary Frances Wall are interconnected in our sequencing. And then the capital improvement projects and so Chuck and I crunched some numbers and that's actually a little bit less now. We think that's around $42 million and we're going to verify that with Ms. Klutz, but we have chipped away at some of that $58 million number, so I'll give you an update on that as I get the more accurate information. And then you see we did also include that thinking ahead of land banking. We included that land banking for that Central Cabarrus High School replacement down the road. So we have that and then we moved to, this is really where we are. So we kind of, again, kind of going back and looking at the video, recollecting everything that I experienced, looking at my notes, I felt very comfortable that everybody's like, yeah, I think we can agree with, these are kind of where we landed. We have a lot of other projects, but so we were talking about the new feeder middle school, so we just looked at our numbers for the middle schools. We're getting pretty tight there. We know that in 2022, that feeder for JM Robinson will relieve a lot of that extra pressure we're seeing in terms of capacity at those schools. R. Brown McAllister, we kind of knew that was the first domino that needed to take place to kind of get a series of buildings built. And then purchasing land for Coltrane Web, we kind of said, well, that could accelerate the building of the new Coltrane Web if we're able to do that. So, and I kind of stopped right there and then I felt like we had some unfinished business to attend to after that. So the task that we're going to have before us is really then the sequencing for 5 through 12. So let me take you through what those projects are, those next eight, and these are in no particular order. So we have the new Opportunity School. You notice I pulled that out, as I said before, from the Glenn Center. The new Beverly Hills at 24 million. And then I grouped these, I brought these in together on purpose. So we have the new Northwest Cabarrus High School. When you build a new Northwest Cabarrus High School, you then can renovate the former Northwest Cabarrus High School to become a middle school. And when you move that middle school to the former Northwest Cabarrus High School, you can then renovate the former Northwest Cabarrus Middle School to create 900 seats for an elementary school that we desperately just heard, that we desperately need in that portion of the county. Some other interconnectedness. Now, there is some cross-connection here as well, but then open the renovation of Mary Frances Wall, so former R. Brown McAllister facility. So if we build R. Brown, that gives you some options for Mary Frances Wall. And then if you, and open a renovation of Central Office Services and possibly, you heard Art talk about auxiliary satellite, possibly at the former Mary Frances Wall facility, we can move those offices that are at the Glenn Center to the former Mary Frances Wall site, potentially some auxiliary services. I know that I'll speak for Mr. Taylor back there. He desperately has the same need that Art Whitaker has in terms of responsiveness. Crossing 85, crossing a county causes delay in responsiveness. So we have a site here which is not centrally, maybe geographically centrally located, but not population-wise. So that auxiliary satellite conversation needs to be had. It's not a full-blown service, but a site where we can have some quick response time. So we included that in there as well. And then lastly, the land for the additional high school that would be land banking and thinking about the Central Cabarrus replacement or expansion at $4 million. So those are the projects that really are the eight projects that we'll look to complete that sequencing from the vacated spreadsheet that you saw before and really looking at completion dates right now. We're not trying to back it up and say, well, when's the start date and when do we pay for the architect and when do we do all the particulars? Really looking at the completion date. So any questions in terms of what any of those mean? In terms of the interconnectedness of those or the projects themselves?
What does that five million fund?
So we look at 5 million, there's options there, Rob. So I think that you could look at the purchase of an older facility that needs renovated. You could also think about the PLC that we built for about, I think it was about four and a half million, Kelly. So kind of looking at it real-time dollars right now, to build a facility like the PLC would be about $5 million. So there's some options there. We have, we're also looking at like existing acreage that we have at our schools, like where can we perhaps go that we don't want to purchase land? So those are all the things that we're, and haven't landed on anything, but those are all the kinds of things that we're exploring, but we think that we could get a facility, a really nice facility for the students at the Opportunity School for around $5 million.
And what capacity is that?
We're not really looking at expanded by somewhere maximum around 150. Any other questions about any of those projects? Okay, so we'll move to the next. So again, really as we're looking at taking those eight and then sequencing it in some sort of cogent order so that we can present a plan and approve that at the next board meeting and then take that to our county commissioners on October 29th as a cohesive Board of Education request to our county commissioners.
Mr. Schultz, if I may, one of the focuses that the county will be presenting on, we're drafting the agenda, but it's not final yet. Hopefully by the end of this week, maybe, we'll have it final, is their ability to pay with debt service for all of the needs in the county, including parks, senior service libraries, courthouse, all the things they're responsible for facility-wise. So that's why they want it in our priority order and who knows, in the past, they've done, they've picked some projects that were a little bit smaller and said, we can fit that in a certain spot, but we need to know what your order is. So if they have X amount of debt service available, they may pick something that's a little bit less. If we can do without, say, the project in the middle or delay it a little bit. So anyways, they just want the priority order. The years will be determined by their ability to get that service, so.
So we're getting close to the activity portion, so these are the directions and we're not quite ready. I want to make sure that the audience and the public fully understand what we're doing. So scratch the pairings up there. So you're just going to go by the partner that you're sitting by. So it'll be Laura and Barry and Cindy and Rob and David and Holly. So you get your elbow partners. So we'll go into those groups. So what you're going to do is work collaboratively to sequence projects based on the common beliefs shared from the August Board of Ed meeting. So you see those beliefs, I've listed those again. And really looking to do that in about seven to 10 minutes. I don't want you to have any arm wrestling matches or anything like that. Just kind of quickly say, well, this makes sense and this makes sense and have some understanding. So one of the things I'll commit to you during that time is that myself, Kelly, Lynn, Chris, any staff members that can answer, you know, clarification questions during that time, we'll float around. This is kind of classroom style, like we want you to do the activity. We're here to float you a lifeline if you have a question about one of the projects. We'll be glad to do that. And then in the next seven to 10 minutes, what we'll do is a group shareout. So I have a super-secret easel over here and it has a large board on it. Chris was calling it the bingo board earlier. It's not a bingo board, but it is a sequencing board that we'll do, we'll take from the smaller group activity and make it a large group activity and then arrive at a draft. And again, I'm not asking you to vote for anything, I'm just asking you to put some priorities out there, take a stab at this and we'll look at a draft so that you can go in and prepare for next week when we finalize the sequencing. So any questions about that? So let me show you the board that you're going to work with. So you will work with this. So you probably remember this from August, this sequencing board. So we put the four projects that were kind of agreed upon up there. I've got the 5 through 12 listed. And so what you'll do, these are my props here, so you'll get a board with your pair. You will get the projects in the envelope and you have tape beside you so you can take the manipulatives that you have and then work through those with your partner and then have some sort of agreed-upon sequence with your partner. Do that in about seven to 10 minutes. I'll monitor if we need more time, we'll do more time. If we need less, we'll do less time and then we'll share out. So any questions about that? And so you're going to be receiving these game pieces. These capital project pieces. So any questions about that? And then I think at this time, Cindy, if you, we could turn the camera down?
Yeah, I believe we'll go off camera now. We'll work in our small groups, ask staff what we need to ask them. And then we'll come back after, when we're using the big bingo board to put our results up there. So we'll be back shortly.